Going to open the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee Public Hearing and actually pause the hearing for the presentation from the class. And then we'll resume our public hearing. If we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will do introduction of members.
Steve Tringali, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Winnie Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Venaco, Millville.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Jane Regio, Millville.
Georgia Jarrett, Blackstone.
Eric Eisner, Student Representative.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
Thank you. And we will go right to our presentation from Mrs. Warren's fourth grade students. If you want to come up right up to the table. If there are any parents that want to come from this side to watch, you're more than welcome.
And take pictures.
Pictures, viewing.
Back to their heads.
The cameras should be facing this way. And this is the presentation of The Day the Crayons Quit?
Hi, my name is Myra DeRozers and I did Brown Crayon. I hope you read the book, The Day the Crayons Quit by Drew DeWalt. Dear Duncan Comma, I'm a very calming color. I am the color of root beer, chocolate milk and mud. I prefer to be used in pretty pictures like, hmm, let's see, a pretty grizzly bear with a pretty pink bow. I love to be used and love the things you make, like the wood and fires and chocolate milk you drink every morning. Now let's get to the point. I need to be used better. I mean, good god, my boy, you need to color inside the lines. I mean, look at the tree you colored yesterday. It looks so funky. It, I mean, it doesn't even look like a tree. Your very neat friend, Brown Crayon.
Good job.
Hi, my name is Damian Grunbeck and I am presenting the Pink Crayon. Dear Duncan Comma, yo, it's me, Pink Crayon. We need to talk. I know you love pink, but use cayenne once in awhile. I need a break. You're using like a slave for your cars and hats. Just please, give me a break. I also know you like green, blue, cayenne and yellow. Your psycho friend, Pink Crayon.
Hi, my name is Ally Brooks. I am going to present Pink Crayon. Dear Duncan Comma, hello, it's me, Pink Crayon. Let's have a little chit chat, okay? I never get to color the cotton candy ponies or bubble gum. It's always your favorite blue crayon. So you need to color the right thing with the right color, okay? We also need to talk about me. I'm naked. You peeled off my clothes. You need to buy me more clothes because all the crayons are laughing at me. You need to help me. I need to tell you more. I'm so pale. I feel seasick because you shake the box. You need to stop that. Did I tell you, my friends, orange and yellow crayon are not speaking to each other? You need to settle this, please. I have to sleep next to yellow and orange crayon and they always are fighting. It's driving me crazy. Your messed up friend, Pink Crayon. P.S., I think ponies would be better pink. And yes, I have an attitude and I'm bossy sometimes.
Good afternoon. My name is Elijah Simpson. I would like to read my friendly letter based on the perspective of Brown Crayon. Dear Duncan Comma, it's me, Brown Crayon. I like drawing brownies and all, but it's making me hungry. Maybe draw a couch once in awhile. I also would love a drawing of a lady crayon, the color brown. Oh, I'm getting off topic. Like I said, please stop drawing dessert items. I'd appreciate it. Also, please remember to draw a lady crayon. I'm lonely. I mean, uh, your embarrassed friend, Brown Crayon.
Hi, my name is Damian Munhall and I'll be presenting my perspective of Brown Crayon. Dear Duncan Comma, hi, it's Brown Crayon. I was thinking, you have not used me a lot since I thought I was your favorite. The other crayons have been getting on my nerves. Yellow and orange, they both want to be the sun, so they argue too much. So can you start getting me out of the box? Please don't use me too much. Already stubby, but whenever you draw fall trees, you may use me for the leaves. Your friend, Brown Crayon. P.S., Duncan used yellow crayon for the sun.
Thank you for letting us read our friendly letters. We would also like to give you a packet with the friendly letters from our classmates that sadly could not make it tonight.
Thanks Elijah.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Skip those, these guys have stuff.
Thank you.
Give them to the good looking ones.
So may, um, Alain, may we ask you questions?
You putting him on the spot?
How about if they all came up? Thank you very much. You all did a wonderful job. Are there questions from members? But you did, you all did fabulous. I love the voice that you put into those, the inflection and the emotion that you did in your reading and your writing. That was really, really nice to hear. I'm curious, I did read the book because we had homework and so I did my homework and read the book. And I noticed that Duncan's favorite crayon was the short stubby blue one. If I went to your desk in your classroom, what would be the shortest crayon in your boxes? Red? How about you, Alain?
I'll do blue or green.
Ooh, or green.
Pink maybe, purple.
Good for you. And you had to be pink? Brown's your favorite.
What's your favorite?
Pink.
Blue.
Blue?
Blue.
Green. Nobody said green. Yeah, he said blue and green. Elijah said blue and green. What about the sun? What color?
Yellow.
Yellow.
Yellow. Yellow and orange.
Good answer.
Good job. Good job. Thank you.
Excellent job, guys.
Wait, one sec, one sec.
And the school committee would like to send you back to school with The Day the Crayons Came Home so you could read it aloud in class. You can have one for the library and one for your own classroom, so we appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get some erasers. Thank you very much. We love when the kids come in. So now we're going to return to our open hearing and we will continue with the agenda for our, although you have a regular meeting, once our public hearing is over. If other people would like to move forward.
Erica, Erica, then you.
Sorry to move back. I'm gonna go.
I would like the crayon.
The yellow or the orange? Orange, of course.
Orange is my favorite. Didn't have a pen. I'm taking the yellow.
Orange is your favorite?
Are we gonna move the mic back? So people can, are we gonna make them come up here and do some of that? They can cover it. Why not? Why not? I love it.
Are you gonna let Erica?
Yeah, no, we're gonna let her go.
No, it's all. No. There's other things to do, right? Say no thank you.
Got some homework and.
I love you people. All right, moving on, we're going to have a report of our student representatives and then we will start our public hearing.
All right, so there hasn't been much going on because we're coming off of vacation week, so a lot of what I'm gonna present is what's going to happen. So to start off with the senior class, we did complete our Matchmaker fundraiser just before we went on vacation. We raised about $200 for the class, which is always good. And then we also measured for caps and gowns this week, which was kind of surreal moment, but you know. And then we have Mr. BMR, March 31st, which is always a great show to come out to, watch some of the senior guys, actually watch all grades embarrass themselves up on stage in front of everybody. And then also looking forward, we have the prom, the senior banquet and the senior class trip, which we did decide on, so that's exciting. And then as far as the junior class goes, they have their roast next Thursday night and I believe that's at BMR. I'm not sure at what time, what time that's at though. And then.
Six thirty?
All right, six thirty. And then the NHS had their Empty Bowl fundraiser. This was a huge success. Three different types of soup, they were all very good. There was a large crowd and everybody, all the members of the honor society had to go into the ceramics room, make a bowl, and then we kind of raffled them off that way. And that's how we raised money and we also collected cans, so. It's a great cause. And then NHS is also looking forward to their induction in May. As far as the student council goes, we're also preparing. So we have our big state conference in Hyannis, which is gonna be on the ninth through the eleventh. It's a three-day, two-night conference. And also before that conference, like right before it, we have a polar plunge, which is just for the students who participate in student council in Massachusetts. And that's a large fundraiser for MASC as well. And then the council is also preparing for Autism Awareness Month, which is in April. As far as sports goes, the winter sports are just finishing up right now. Both the girls and the boys' basketball teams had their senior games. And I believe the girls missed the playoffs by one game. The guys didn't have as fortunate of a season. And then I know a few kids went pretty far into the districts for track and whatnot. I'm not sure what level, but I know some kids went pretty far. And then I'm gonna take a shot at band here, so don't get mad at me if I get a few things wrong. But the home show is this weekend, the 27th. Not sure what time they perform. Does anybody know that?
Starts at four.
I think it starts at four.
You'll be a little early.
Just get there early.
All right. I know they've had a few shows so far and they came in third place for one of the shows. That's all I got.
Very good. So I'll ask the question, where is the senior class trip?
Oh, okay. Senior class trip is going to be at a place called Brownstone in Connecticut. It's on a lake and they offer, they have this huge course set up of inflatables that you can run around out on the lake. They also have like zip lining setup, wakeboarding, rock climbing, hiking, kayaking. So it'll be a fun day trip. And they include food and everything, so I think it'll be a really good time. Yeah.
Any other questions for our student rep? How many more days?
I knew she wasn't, I forgot. I forgot to talk, I'll be honest. I walked in and I told her.
You don't have a countdown?
I don't. It's, I don't know.
He was measured for his cap and gown. That was his. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to our public hearing.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Venaco. I want to say thank you to everyone, the leadership team that is here tonight, and to our board members and committee members and teachers who are here to listen and take part in our public hearing. As everybody knows, Mass General Laws requires that we have a hold of public hearing every year, all school districts, to present their budgets for the upcoming year. And while we are a bit early, that is okay because we know we have a lot of factors that will hopefully reduce the number that we are at now. On the left, as you can see in your packet, that is our enrollment as of October 1st. And our percentage of operating costs distributed between the two towns runs very, very much the same year after year. And so for FY17, it will be 71.86 percent of the operating cost for Blackstone and 28.14 percent for Millville, based upon student enrollment. And again, that percentage is very similar year after year. On the preliminary budget summary on the right-hand side of the screen in your packet, as you can see by function code, we have shown FY14, FY15, the current FY16 budget, and then FY17's preliminary budget. And while the initial request seems large, just about a million and a half dollars, there's even two other factors that are not in that number. One being health insurance. We are currently awaiting our renewal rate and based upon what that is, will dictate how we approach that. We do know that our usage and our loss ratio has increased in the past year. Even though they do a two-year look back, that will probably mean some sort of increase. And then we also are currently negotiating with our Unit A professional staff. And so that number is undergoing collective bargaining as we speak. We have new staff that we are requesting. We have three elementary teachers that we are requesting, one per building, which will provide us with additional opportunities for enrichment and specials and to give our current reading and literacy teachers the full ability to instruct classes on a regular basis. We are also looking at another science teacher at the high school so that we can continue to increase and expand our offerings of advanced placement courses. We have been gratified by the amount of students, the number of students that are challenging themselves this year under our Math and Science Initiative grant. And we look to expand, hopefully, an advanced placement computer science course as well as AP Statistics. I'm not sure how many people saw the Sunday Globe last week, but there was fascinating article about the number-one jobs that our college graduates will be tempted with this year. And the number-one job in terms of salary was IT, software professionals. If you can write code for software applications, average starting salary is $90,000. So obviously, there's very few high schools that are offering coding now. That is something that we certainly should be looking at. And hopefully with the addition of an additional teacher at the high school, we'll be able to do that. The other position at the high school is the Library Media Center Coordinator, a position that has been cut several years back. With the continuing advancements in technology and the ability to integrate technology across the curriculum, that position becomes a must-have, not a nice-to-have. It is also a requirement to maintain full accreditation, to have a certified specialist in your media center. And the ability to have that person, that staff member, to be able to integrate technology and assist students, along with staff, to be able to allow staff to further use technology in their classroom instruction is a must in this day and age. Our world is changing rapidly. And our current Facebook model is now in its 12th year. We know that our applications continue to crop up and jobs that were not around 10 years ago are sprouting up, as well as careers that used to be around that are no longer a viable alternative. So we must keep pace and technology is a big piece of that. The final staff member that we are looking to add is a third person in our tech department. We currently have two folks that maintain all of the technology in all five schools and across the district. That's just not enough by about three, but we do need to add one more person to be able to keep pace with all that we are trying to do. We have completed our wireless project, or just about completing our wireless project. It will be done by the end of this year. That will give us complete wireless coverage in every square foot of all of our schools. Coverage and capacity for multiple devices. The next phase of that would be to look at our throughput in fiber optic to allow transmission of data, large volumes at speeds that we can live with. We were very fortunate, thanks to Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Monroe and Dr. Thompson, to pursue E-Rate, which has given us a very large reimbursement of this project at 50%. We would look that we would do the same thing on Phase Two. But that technology piece becomes integral to where we go. It ties across the curriculum, it ties in across the opportunities for our students, and it certainly ties into how we effectively manage the data that we have to make sure that we report to the state. We do have some returning staff that are out on leave of absence this year and that would be an additional amount. We also are looking at additional curriculum enhancements, along with the second year of our Envisions Math in K-5, we're looking to add a grade six component of that as well. So there is much going on. Special education continues to be, along with health insurance, the most volatile area that we deal with. And districts do not have a choice. We must follow the law, a law that has never been fully funded since it was passed in 1974. And so that federal lack of commitment has translated into continued pressure to the states who continue to pass it along to local districts and local municipal budgets. And that is unfortunately our world in public education today. And special ed costs are not something that we can avoid. Rather, it is, those are costs that we must take on whenever they are presented to us. We are also looking to purchase a wheelchair van because we have students in wheelchairs and we think that the purchase and/or lease would greatly aid in reducing our transportation budget over the next seven or eight years. We also have some contractual obligations that are known to us in terms of contracts that will be in force for next year. And all of those numbers together total about $1,005,000. And then, as I mentioned, on top of that, there is still health insurance and there is still contractual collective bargaining outcomes to be awaited on our Unit A professional staff. Now, I guess I could say that's the bad news because the Staples commercial used to say that Christmas was the most wonderful time of the year and back to school a close second. This for us is the most wonderful time of the year. Not everyone agrees with that. But this allows us, the professional educators that you entrust your children to, to understand what our needs are for the upcoming year. And this dialogue, this communication, this sequence of meetings is reflective, it is powerful, but it also makes us think and understand where we have been and where we need to go. And this district has a lot of good things happening. And it is very important to understand that the arena that is public education is putting more and more burden on local budgets. The federal contribution to our total sources of funds this year is 3%. And politically, we see where that is going because there has been no conversation about public education in the political contests so far. The reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965, that occurred in December, which was most recently for the previous 12, 14 years, No Child Left Behind, has been renamed ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. While they have left the testing requirement intact for the 17 testing grades three through eight and the graduation requirement in high school, and the fact that we need to report on our subgroups, there is precious little enforcement and therefore precious little money behind that law. So that puts a bigger burden on the states where the federal government has said, thank you very much, you want to own it, here it is, you own it. The problem with that in Massachusetts is that our healthcare, our retirement and our debt service is taking all of our new growth. So in 2000, healthcare was about 20% of our state budget. Last year, it crossed 40% of our state budget. So no other line in the state budget has risen as fast as the healthcare and health insurance. And because that extra 20-plus percent is there and that's real, that crowds out an awful lot of other lines. And certainly, public education is one of those. And we know that the state, which did their due diligence on the Foundation Budget Review Commission, which took last year to come up with what most of us could have told them at the beginning of the process, that the two biggest, most important pieces that we need help on state are special education costs and health insurance. And while the governor's promise was that all line items would adjust by the growth in the state revenue at 4.3%, he forgot that because Chapter 70 has been initially funded at 1.6%. And we also know that that Foundation Budget Review Commission, if they wanted to apply the true cost to what it costs today to educate versus what the initial formula in 1993 said, Chapter 70 currently is about $4.5 billion. There would be an additional $2.5 billion that would need to be added to that number in order to cover the true costs of educating students in 2016 and 17. That is the fact. And I don't believe the state has the wherewithal because the one promise that he did keep, the governor, was no new taxes. So there's no additional revenue there. There is additional revenue driven by the economic gains within the state. State income tax, capital gains. State income tax, capital gains, sales tax, that's projected to grow by $1 billion this year. And that is great. However, that new money is offset by about $1 billion and a half already earmarked for early retirements, health insurance, and service on the debt. So I don't anticipate any great help from the state. Regional transportation, flat-funded again. Circuit Breaker, which is an offset reimbursement to our most expensive special education costs, So we do not see, currently, and again, we're going through the process, House Ways and Means, House, Senate, Joint, back to the governor, while I am certainly hopeful that our outreach to our legislators will get some attention, I don't see the math on the state side adding up. And there's a regional school legislative breakfast next week, in which an awful lot of folks will be attending, and we have our superintendent's roundtable with the commissioner of education as well next week. And there's an awful lot of information going back and forth, back and forth. We're going to have to wait and see where we end up. We do have some other opportunities, certainly bidding our regular ed transportation. We're going out to bid this spring. We also are looking at our special ed out-of-district transportation, to go in with the collaborative on a single-source provider, which should be able to save us some of our expenditures. So there are pieces, as we go through, that we think we will be able to reduce this need. But right now, the prudent financial management would not be to anticipate anything and then have to come back and say, "Whoops, I guess I should have aimed a little higher," and come back to a number than the other way around. So over the next six or seven weeks, there will be a lot of other information that we will have that will make our projections more realistic. But this preliminary budget is just that. This is a preliminary budget based upon need. And there are no nice-to-haves, geez, wouldn't it be nice if we could put a swimming pool in? That's not in here. And there's another key component to our long-term planning, and that is certainly addressing the infrastructure needs of all of our schools, but especially at John F. Kennedy and at the high school. Those buildings are 45 and 50 years old, with original glass, with original HVAC systems. None of us live in houses that have those systems that are that old. And most of us don't work in facilities with that kind of aging infrastructure. And the cost to maintain those bits and pieces that break randomly is becoming a burden. So those two buildings will need to be addressed, and I will, over the summer, be proposing to the towns to consider what we can do to address those specific needs. Certainly, A.F. Maloney, Millville Elementary, and this building are also getting to the point where we're going to have to have a planned phase-in approach to maintaining the buildings. Millville Elementary is 25 years old. It's in great shape for 25 years, but things are starting to break, things are starting to need to be maintained that will give us clean, safe environments over the next 25 and 30 years. We also need to update some of our curriculum and instructional areas in the high school, again, just to keep pace, not to go out and build a brand-new one, but to make sure that we have the best bang for the buck for our students. You'll notice that when Cobb, our business manager, has corrected and adjusted some of the lines within this budget so that the appropriate expenditures are matched to the proper function codes. And that is a lot of work and a lot of detail. So some of these lines in between will look to be way over, and others will look to be under or zero, but those will, in almost every case, net out. But that $1,492,506 is a combination of additional staff that I outlined, the curriculum enhancements. I forgot to mention, and I'm looking at Mr. Gonzalez, I can't believe I forgot to mention, the Chromebooks that we are looking to purchase to supplement the learning for all of our students. And we are looking to start off with grades eight, nine, and 10, and then, as we accumulate more Chromebooks, allow carts to be then added to the elementary schools to be shared across the classrooms. This is a huge initiative. We are not leading the pack here. Other districts are doing this and have done this. The key piece of it is, a Chromebook is a wonderful device, but if the students don't know how to use it, and the staff doesn't know how to work with it, then it sits on the shelf and gets dusty. So this is, along with, and thanks to the Blackstone Board of Selectmen, the ability to put a TV production studio in our high school is something that differentiates us from many area high schools. And the opportunities that that gives to our kids is spectacular. So there's a lot of excitement, there's a lot of things that we are moving forward with, there are programs and initiatives that we are getting folks to start to understand. We, and certainly I, also know the limitations of our towns. Towns' revenue gets to increase, at least through property tax, by a 2.5% increase per year, under our Prop 2.5. Like it or not, that's what towns can do. Now, we do know that unrestricted general government aid will also increase at that 4.3%, maybe a little bit, 4.64, so far. And again, as those numbers go through the legislative process at the state level, that will be a little more clear for us as to how it impacts our computation as we come together in two weeks for the adoption. So that, within those two weeks, we will refine our numbers and go with what we know to come up with the preliminary assessments, as we have done the last couple of years. But there is a lot of moving parts that will continue to shift over the next six to eight So I don't want folks watching to say, "I can't believe the schools are asking for a $1,000,000 increase," which is a 6.8% increase, which is almost three times larger than what the towns can assess to increase their revenue base, but that's the starting point. And we, as we go through and refine these numbers, I would expect that those numbers will come down. As I mentioned, we have contractual obligations, we have transportation, we have our spend-down of current FY '16, and right now, the weather is being kind. So utility costs and heating costs and electricity should come in under, but it only takes a couple of students that move into our district with IEPs that require significant allocation to take all of that money and more. And so if there's one thing the state can do to help districts, it's to address the unevenness of planning to cover special education costs, which by law, students deserve and their parents. That's why we are in the business of public education. We educate everybody. The rich and the poor, the tall and the small, the overachievers and the underachievers. Of all ethnicities, countries of origin, emotional and social backgrounds, we educate everyone, and we do it with the very best of intentions and to the best of our abilities every day for every child in every classroom. That's our mission. And so, yes, $1,000,000 is a lot of money. My goal is to bring that into the reality as we learn the pieces that come together. I don't believe Chapter 70 is going to increase to a point that's going to make, that's going to take some of the pressure off of local budgets. I don't see Circuit Breaker being added to in the amount that it should be added. And I don't see the state addressing Norfolk Agricultural, which is a direct bill to the towns' cherry sheets. And if we spend $12,000 per pupil, why do we spend $24,000? That doesn't seem fair. And that's a state issue. And when I see the commissioner next week, I will be happy to bring that to his attention again, because it puts an unfair burden on the towns' cherry sheets. We also choice in about 45 students. And a lot of those students come from surrounding towns and across all grades, as you can see, because they see something here that they want to take advantage of. Whether it's the enrichments at the middle school, whether it's the music program, whether they have friends that are already here. The problem is, we have about 90 folks who choice out. And again, for a myriad of reasons, students choice out. So in terms of our total school-aged children, about 15% of the students in Blackstone and Millville choose to go outside the district, as is their right and as is their parents' right. There are lots of choices. But what we want to do is make our district, those families' home district, where they pay their taxes, the first and best choice. And the only way to do that is to invest in the infrastructure, to invest in the curriculum, to invest in the development, the professional development of our staff. And if we do that, again, not all at once, but gradually over time, we'll be in a very competitive model. On the right here, on that third page of the tiny print, there is the rationale for some of the changes on those lines, line by line. And there's also a page of notes that goes into some of the 23 and 2305 and 2310 lines, which are professional staff lines. The budget history here over the last five years shows a budget that, an operating budget that has been uneven, even though the towns have incrementally increased their assessment. But the bottom-line operating budget, which goes into other factors, has been uneven at best. Our goal is to, once we regain and stabilize and recalibrate, would be to have incremental increases. Doesn't even have to be 2.5%. You know, as we get back the positions that we have had to cut over time, and as we stabilize the programming that we are doing, a 1.75%, 2%, 2.25% increase each year incrementally pays huge dividends. As you can see in that number, that 1.75% actually goes back five years prior. So that's 10 years. At 1.75% from 2006, we'd land this year almost in the same spot that we're looking for. And no, I didn't figure that out in advance and then come up with a 1.75. I just took that as an arbitrary number. So in that far-right column, as we understand what we are looking at, both from the feds as well as from the state coffers, then we'll be able to put together the final projections for the school committee to adopt on March 10th, in two weeks. The very last page in your booklet is the current staff that is employed here at BMR. And I believe we are the largest employer. About 60% of our total source of funds goes for salaries. In municipal districts, that number is much higher, around 80%, but the benefits are covered by the municipality. So that if you add in the 70% of what we spend on benefits, then salary and benefits is about 77% this year of our total source of funds, which would also include state and federal grants. That would be on top of that, as well as Circuit Breaker. So there, that is the picture in a snapshot. I would be happy to entertain questions and comments. If I can't answer them, I will not try and give you a quick answer. I would certainly do the math and follow up with you tomorrow. But we do have our leadership team here, and I would encourage them, if there are questions or comments, that they could certainly also speak to any specific issues. As I say, the goal will be, and again, I know I'll be meeting with the finance committees over the month of March, we'll certainly be meeting with the boards of selectmen, and hopefully by then, we will have a much more refined number, as we know the components that make this budget so much of an interesting challenge to deal with each year. So if there are questions, or I certainly turn it to the committee, if we've spent some time going through this ourselves, we have a lot of anticipation, I guess is the right word, that we will get hard and fast numbers so that we can start to put pen to paper as we get in front of the finance committees. But I want folks watching at home to know one thing. I would not be doing my job if I wasn't asking for what I believed was what we need to run our district for all of our kids for next year. But I have to temper that with the reality that is the revenue structure of our towns. And so there is the art within the science, over the next six to eight weeks, to come up with a budget that satisfies the needs of our students and also fits the pocketbooks of our taxpayers and our towns. It has to be, there's only one pie here. Well, there's two, but there's really one. And we have to be able to substantiate and understand the reality of the spending. We have to do it with accountability, with accessibility. We have to be able to make sure that we are looking at efficiencies. When we renovate, hopefully soon at the high school, what a great place to put some solar panels, over the parking lot. Now, the cost of energy is not quite the burden it was three, four, or five years ago, and the anticipation is that it will continue to drive down, as a big part of electricity is based upon the generation of oil. And oil is certainly becoming less expensive. But there are lots of ways that we can look at this. The problem, too, a lot of folks say, "What about grants? We should be getting more grants." Yes, there are grants. The grants that we are eligible for, we are not big enough, small enough, urban enough, poor enough, or have enough of a low-income needy population to qualify. And there certainly are grants out there that we can apply for that are not, not in the federal title or state title variety. So that is a piece of what we all have to do as we move forward. So I would certainly defer to the floor and to the committee. Again, there's a lot that will happen over the next six to eight weeks, and as we start to know these numbers, we will get them out there as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go to questions from the public first. Is there any? Any questions from the committee? We're not voting on this number tonight, this is just a presentation. Can you come up to the microphone and just introduce yourself? Your name and your town.
Jerry Finn from Millville.
Jerry Finn from Millville. Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Just a question for you concerning the health insurance. Am I led to believe then by looking at this, Doctor, that the health insurance number you have in here is a level-funded health benefit insurance for the employees for FY seventeen?
Yes. For right now, we are using that same number. Until we know what the renewal rate is.
Okay.
And that's being bargained as we speak.
Okay, and do you have any placeholder at all? Because my assumption is not going down, although we'd all wish it would.
Exactly, I would say, yes, it is. But I, along with the collective bargaining that we're doing with our Unit A contract, it would be, it would be impossible for me to come up with the right number to put in there as a placeholder right now. And if I go too low and it comes in higher, obviously, that number is fixated in everyone's mind.
We'll beat you if that happens.
And if I go the other way and I come up with this inflated number that we beat for some miracle of, of me going to church every day, then we will be in better shape but have already put that hysteria out there. So we chose to use the flat number, bringing that forward with the increase that we absorbed this year. And as we wait to see what the increase will be as we go forward. And this is all, as I say, it's gonna happen probably over the next two to three weeks.
Do you use any type of consultants or brokers in terms of that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and do they have any type of knowledge as to what the statewide average is?
They have all of that, they have, and again, that's what we are going to be working on next week and the week after.
Right, but I mean, have they given you any indication that it's gonna be one percent or twenty percent?
They've given me, they've given me indication, and I'm amazed that we, we buy insurance like we buy used cars. You know, the insurance companies come out and say, this is what your increase is gonna be. And then we say, see you later, we can't pay that. Okay, what can you pay? And that's how we arrived at last year's increase. And so, the, the range has been from six percent to fourteen percent. Now, if I look at the actuarial piece of it in terms of what our utilization has been, what our loss ratios are, it's probably going to come out at first closer to the fourteen than the six. But then the, the negotiating begins.
So your experience rated on that, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and with a two-year.
So suffice it to say, if they are accurate with an experience rate that has increased, you're gonna have an increased amount probably greater than six. Probably less than fourteen.
Probably.
And probably more in the state average of eleven.
Probably.
Because that's what all the other cities and towns pretty much have come in at.
But last year, last year, they came out at ten point nine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar with last year, but.
And, and we ended up paying a five percent increase.
Yeah, you, you had some things that drive those things differently. The, the question I've really got is that it would appear to me that you're gonna have yourself a relatively high number here in terms of what the insurance cost is gonna be relative to being flat. So you know it's gonna be an increase. You don't know the exact amount yet?
We know the renewal rate percentage, but then the next phase of it is how do we mitigate that?
Well, no, I understand that, but when you're all done.
Right.
When the arm wrestling's over and everybody's finally said, let's quit. If it ends, if it comes in at somewhere between, as you said, between six, but you got experience rate a little higher, so maybe seven, to somewhere perhaps ten or eleven.
Right.
So if you were to use the mean through there, which is about what the state average is, if you were to use that, you could at least have some indication of what this additional dollars would be. Not, not perfect yet, but at least have a placeholder to know that, Jesus, I'm, I'm looking at another two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of insurance costs.
Yes, and, yes.
Okay, that's all I wanna know.
And then we go and say, how do we, if there's desire to mitigate that by the committee, do we do a plan, design change? Do we look at copays? Do we look at deductibles? These are all things that insurance companies love to talk about because they know they got you. And so, for argument's sake, because the math is easy, if it comes in at ten percent and two fifty, do we want to take that or do we go back and say, geez, you know, last year, it's funny, you told us it was ten point nine, we ended up at five. So you're telling me it's ten? What do you expect I'm going to do?
The brokers would work that out for you, I'd assume. They'd be the arm wrestlers, not you folks in particular.
No, it, it, last year it came to me.
Yeah, but I mean, eventually it comes, the buck stops here anyways. But the idea of it is that the brokers would be the one that would do in the maneuvering to try to get that price on.
Give us the ammunition to be able to understand.
Okay, I, I was just curious, it, it seems to me that knowing what I know at least about what insurance costs are, and you're absolutely dead-on correct, it is a killer. It's a budget buster this year. That it is such a big budget buster, when I look at this, this increase of six point eight, six point nine percent, merit as, as it may be. The thing I gets concerned about, I don't have insurance in here yet. That's a killer. And then I think I heard also said that you have the, the idea of the staff, you're in a negotiation year? Okay, so that would be something that would be, if, even if you went forward on that and didn't come to an agreement, you would still have to go retro? Perhaps back to the beginning of the year, September?
Yeah, the goal here is to continue to bargain that so that we can get to a yes in March, April. But I'm not gonna comment on, on the bargaining.
I'm with you on that one, trust me, I've been there, done that, so. I get an idea, okay. Okay, so those are really a couple of factors there that, that when you look at those two numerics, those two numerics themselves would, would potentially drive this budget up by another three, four, five-hundred-thousand dollars.
Six, seven, eight, absolutely.
Whatever number you wanna pick.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's troubling.
Which, which only puts additional pressure on us, the leadership team and the committee, to come up with a number based upon all of the different factors that are going to come flying at us to be able to understand what the right number is going to be. Because we know that we can't support, the towns simply can't, support that kind of an increase.
Now, if you, if you look at Millville in particular, my hometown, Aaron's hometown, when we, we looked at, you look at two and a half, regardless of how you do the math, you got a five-and-a-half-million-dollar budget, take two and a half on it, what do you got, thirty-five thousand?
Right.
Huh? I mean, that's the reality of what two and a half will garner for, you talk about new dollars. Your million and a half is my thirty thousand.
Right.
And that, that makes it difficult to understand, and I'm not advocating that, 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 that these things aren't necessary. Of course they are. The question is, how do you get there? You know, that's really what the issue comes down to.
And that's what the committee is charged with.
Oh, yeah, understood.
And that's what, my job is to bring the numbers with, with the deeper understanding behind them so that folks know there are no surprises. We're not gonna come back, you know, in six months and say, geez, we didn't get this, but we need this. And so, it's always easier to be able to pare back and prune as we go through the process. And I, you're preaching to the choir with me because, as I mentioned, it has to balance.
Under promise and no deliver.
I have to do the job that I'm entrusted with, and that is to make sure that my seventeen-hundred-and-fifty students get the best opportunities that they can.
No question, no question. Again, to the choir, I agree with you on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Was there?
Did you have a question for Jerry?
No, I just wanted to add something, just. My approach to this, and I do understand the limitations on two and a half with regard to Millville. What I also wanted to note, just so, because you're, obviously televised, there's other people watching it. The problem we have is, is that we went cheap because of budgetary restraints in the town of Millville and Blackstone and, you know, everybody gets a shared and blame, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, where you went with less than one percent increase, less than three percent increase, less than two percent increase, point one percent increase in two thousand and fifteen.
John, if I may, that, that's really a sawtooth situation.
I understand, I understand that, and, you know, I, I let you speak, so I, I just want the people and the folks to understand Chromebooks technology is a two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in this budget. We're so far behind right now that when you're talking about doing increases for health insurance, it's something we can't control, and you know that. It's a, it's a, it's a quandary, but when you look at it and say, well, this is all we're gonna give you. And, you know, I've, I've heard this time and time again, there's almost a thought and a feeling, and not you, just a thought and a feeling, you just gave me the opportunity to speak to the issue. There's a thought and a feeling out there, somehow there's some hidden box of money out in the backyard, somewhere behind the schools, that when we don't get what we want at town meeting, we just go and open up the box and grab the money and pay for what we need. We don't have what we need. The kids don't have what they need. They need an increase in, in technology in the schools. They need, you know, and whether we have to tweak it on the other end to make the health insurance work, because it is in a sad commentary that you're sitting there going, well, we're gonna increase the health insurance, there's a benefit, and we're gonna increase this because this is, and, and you know who's gonna pay the price? The kid that doesn't have the Chromebook. The kid that doesn't have the technology keeps them at least, not even up to, even close to where the other students are. And then you look at the budgets where, where we're losing people like a sinking ship that are going to other schools that then we have to pay for. So it's penny-wise, pound foolish mentality. So I agree that when we look at these budgets, I can tell you what my perspective's gonna be. When I, because this, I'm a first-time person in looking at the school budget. When I look at this budget, I'm looking for value from two perspectives. First of all, I'm looking for value in terms of what we pay. And secondly, and most importantly, and I think, I echo exactly what you're saying and what the, what the doctor, what the superintendent's saying, I'm looking for value for our students. And I'm looking to bring them back up after, you know, ridiculously low spending and investment and bring them at least back up to where we're, where we need to be to move this educational system forward, so we're not losing kids to other schools and, and other opportunities. And they have them, and I don't wanna continually pay for them. Just to bus a kid to Tri-County. You know, you might as well buy a limousine and just pick them up, it'd probably be cheaper, okay? I'd rather invest in Chromebooks for our kids in this school and they say, well, you know what, the programs here aren't really that bad. And we don't have to go all the way to Franklin, we don't have to go to all these, and we don't have to go, go through the rigamarole because it's not an easy process for school choice. Rather just stay here because it's not so bad. And that's, hopefully, what we'll be able to do with this budget, was be able to fund something that people can afford, because nobody likes to pay property taxes and whatnot. But you always wanna, you always wanna invest in your educational programs for your, for your towns and for your kids. I mean, you know, that's one of the things that this, these communities are known for. They, you know, pride in their educational systems. And it's not just the band, it's just overall, the school system. So I echo a lot of what you're saying, and, but that's the, that's the quandary. I just wanted to say that so, because the cameras are watching, we brought up the topic. This isn't just about dollars and cents. I mean, money is gonna be, obviously, a serious consideration. And this is a big number, which I, but we've got, as I look at it, I mean, you're just hearing one person. My perspective on this is, we need to bring us, we need to move us forward. You know, we really need to move us forward. And if that, you know, is, is a requirement of looking at two and a half, then we need to do what we need to do. And if the towns decide what they wanna do, then that's up to them. But I hope that each town's gonna make a decision. I hope we're not gonna get rubber-stamp-type budgets like we have in the past. At least that's been my experience, so. You know, I'm gonna try to market and sell what budget we feel at the end of the day. You know, this is the first hearing, you know, and it's, you know, happy to see somebody coming to the table because I don't know how it is in Millville, but Blackstone, every single year, it never fails. There's always the people out there that say, how come we're just hearing about this for the first time? Really? I mean, it's February, we're having a public meeting, it's televised. You're here, you read the materials, you're, you, you seem to be, have a pretty good grasp of what's going on. So I wanna make sure everybody knows not only what we have and what we're trying to do, but what we're hoping to do in the future. So, you know, thank you for your time and coming out here, by the way.
Oh, it's my pleasure, and the last sentiment I'll, I'll leave is the rationale you made, John, was a good one. And that was the sawtooth budgeting that was done previously basically drove to the issues you have right now because of lack of funding. And really, that smacks to one thing. That smacks to me to a four-letter word called plan, P-L-A-N. If there was a plan in place, you wouldn't have such sawtooth situations. I hope with Mr. Himmlenberger here, obviously, he'll have a plan or has a plan or will demonstrate a plan so that we won't get this type of effect. We'll actually get an effect that we'll have a spending cap that we all can afford and make sure that we drive our educational process forward. That's the most important thing, but it can't be like this.
Abs, and you know, you know, although Dr. Himmlenberger is important, don't forget the rest of the gentlemen seated to his left who brings to the table just as much. And you're absolutely right, we need a plan. We, we have to stop shooting from the hip because, you know, you know, because of this present situation and, and that's it. We need a plan, not for next year, a year af, we need a long-term plan.
I like you, John, thank you.
You're the only one in Millville.
No, Joe, that's, that's true.
Any other questions or comments from the public? If not, I'll move on to the committee. Bill?
I mean, I agree with everything that Mr. Finn said, and I hear year after year, because this isn't my first go-around here. You know, I've heard Mr. Finn say about a plan before too. And my response every time to him is, I wanna hear Millville's plan too, about what they're gonna do to help us continue to, to build that. Last year was really the first time, and I had, and I commended Millville last year where, and the FinCom director.
Rich Crivello.
Rich Crivello.
Great job.
Was amazing, it was amazing. So Millville's got to continue to have a plan too, Mr. Finn, because, you know, and I'm not gonna go back and forth tonight, we'll have plenty of time to do that in the next eight weeks. But, you know, you can always say, plan, you know, we need a plan. We'll give you a plan, but then we hear, sharpen your pencils, we, we can't do that. That's the seesaw that we, that we have. So I'm sure we'll talk more about that at all of the committee meetings, you know, BBT's budget hearing that we'll be attending and, you know, Millville's FinCom and so on and so forth, so.
We'll look forward to it, sir.
Yep, see you there.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just make a quick one. I wanna also agree with everything everybody said, but I wanna take John's comments one step further, that it's not only the children that will lose, it is every single one of us. Because I bet if I asked a question in this room right now, who is a product of a public education at some point in their educational career, the majority of us would raise our hand. And I know when I'm seventy or eighty or soon to be retired or already retired or whatever, I know that I want the best doctor that's out there, the best lawyer that's out there, the best garage technician for my car, the best whatever it is, who is probably likely a product of public education, that they had the best education possible. And I think that is really important in this, this time of technology, in this time of constant change, that we meet the demands to make sure that our populace in our towns, because it doesn't only affect the children, it affects every single one of us and all the people we act with every single day. And public education is how we educate the majority of people in this country, and we need to fund it.
Agreed. Thank you. And I just wanna point out one quick math problem I did while I was sitting here. Twenty-three million, two-hundred-eighty-three thousand, eight-hundred-forty-six dollars brings us to about thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars per student, which is only seventy-four dollars per day. And I know my kids are worth more than that. So at least you'll know what we're fighting for and, you know, why we need it. Because seventy-four dollars per day, per kid in this school is pennies to what they need. So I hope that number helps you realize where we stand. Okay, so we will be moving from our public hearing back to our regular meeting. And we have a consent agenda A warrants field trips and minutes of meeting for February eleventh, which I was actually not here for, so I won't. I will abstain from voting on the February eleventh. Do we wanna separate those?
We wanna separate it out then, here?
No, last time we just voted for all warrants, right?
Yeah.
Move to approve consent agenda A.
Second.
Hey, motion made by John, second by Wendy. Are there any discussions or questions?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm abstaining, because I wasn't here for the meeting. So as school committee, we've had our public hearing. Moving on to our motions. Uh, we have a motion in our packet for the regional agreement. Changing the regional agreement, uh, we have to bring it to the warrants for our town meetings. So we have a motion in front of us, um, of the way we feel it should be read. Does anyone wanna read this for the motion?
Do we need to read the whole thing, or just the change?
Um, I think just what we're gonna change.
I will. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to replace the language in the regional agreement, to, um, delete subsection A, B, and C, and replace it with the following. All students in grade pre-K through five of all member towns, regardless of which member town they live in, will attend an assigned elementary school regardless of where it is located, based on grade level, beginning with the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year.
Second.
Um, I think you should just add the, the next sentence to delete subsection C.
No, didn't it say it up there? Subsection A, B, and C?
Yeah.
And that's a separate article.
That's separate?
From Article seven and Article eight, Article twelve and Article thirteen.
And then to delete subsection C from Article thirteen miscellaneous provisions.
Okay, so motion made by Jane, and, sorry, who was the second?
Bill.
Bill.
Second by Bill. Uh, so any discussion for?
I mean, I think it's worth reading what a yes and a no vote would be.
So, um, I'll start with that. Um, a yes vote would allow all students in pre-K through grade five, regardless of which member town they live in, to attend the assigned elementary school regardless of where it is located, based upon grade level. As an example, all pre-K kindergarten, grade one, grade two, uh, could be housed at one elementary school. Grades three, four, and five could be at another elementary school. It would allow the direct, uh, the district, the flexibility to deliver the most consistent and high-quality education to all students. And this has been, um, a, a, over two-year work, over a four-year work, um, in our hands, led by Wendy, with a lot of time and energy, um, just trying to see what would be best for our kids. Not our budget, not our, you know, but what is best for the kids, um, to deliver the education they deserve. Um, a no vote would keep the current assignment to Millville students K through five. They would attend Millville Elementary School, and Blackstone students K through five would attend JFK and AFM. Um, so basically, we'd change, it would not change at all, if it's a no vote.
It's also worth noting that there's gonna be some information out there.
Yeah, there's gonna be, hopefully by the end of next week, the video will, will be starting to air on the cable channels and also, uh, social media. So, um, we're just wrapping up the final editing stage, and by next week, you'll see, um, the video, just to be clear, is just point of information of all the work that we've done, um, just so that you can see the work that the committees have put forth. So, hopefully by the end of next week, and it'll run for quite a few weeks.
At least through our, and do we plan to have any, um, information nights, or?
If you would like to.
Well, I guess we'll see what feedback we get from the video.
The only, only other thing I'll add, Erin, is, is,
Sure.
I know this has been tried a couple of times. I know when my kids were, uh, in elementary school, ten, eleven years ago, it was presented to the public. So I want the public to know, this is a different proposal. Back then, uh, it was, um, you could be in a different school, back then, they were separating grades. So, uh, and they were picking kids based on geography.
Or they were trying to, if you had a class size of thirty here and twenty-three here, we're gonna take three kids out of Blackstone. That's not what we're doing.
Right, this is grades being together. So, all, everyone in the fifth grade would be together. There wouldn't be some in Blackstone and some in, in, um, Millville.
You will, you will have a hallway of kindergarten, a hallway of first grade, and they will be, you know, for it to...
And I'd like to add, I know, um, a lot of people think the driving force for all this is, is it gonna save money? Is it gonna save money? That really is not the driving force for this, it's just to balance some of the inequities. I mean, if you see some of the classes, our, our class sizes are so small. For example, you have twenty-two in second grade in Millville, that's one class. Um, you can't slice it any other way. If you, if you go down each of the grades, Millville versus Blackstone, the class sizes swing wildly, because the numbers are so small, just to balance out the inequity. And a lot of people say, well, I'm only gonna vote for it if it saves money. That, that was really not our driving force for this whole thing. It really was just to balance the inequities, and, um, as well as the educational. I mean, you know, if you have all the fifth grade in one building, just their common planning opportunities for the teachers are tremendous. And, um, you know, if you ask the teachers here at the middle school, they, they did see that there is a difference. Kids from Millville, kids from Blackstone.
And that's actually on the video. They, they actually have, um, there was a survey that went out for students, a survey that went out to the towns, and a survey that went out to the middle school teachers, and they answered it, and it, and that'll be, the, the results will be on, you know, the survey of, of the things that are, are strengths and the things that need improvement. Um, and it's, it's all there in black and white, so.
And this is not gonna happen for next September, we're talking the September after, so. There's still plenty of time to ask you questions.
And just so everyone's aware, this is not, the school committee is not totally uniform. I'm not particularly in favor of this, so.
We're gonna vote.
We're gonna vote. And you, you.
No, I, I under, I understand you're gonna vote, I just don't want the general public to believe that we're all on the same horse cart here, taking this to town meeting. I'm making it clear that I,
Well, what we're doing too.
Because I sat in the same town meeting when a similar proposal was resoundly defeated.
But it was not this proposal. We, Bill just made it clear, it was completely different.
No, it, it, it had, the emperor had a different robe when they walked into town meeting, so. But I'm curious to see, I'm curious to see what the information is.
On, um, whether we're going to put it on the warrants for the town.
Right.
And its majority, so you can certainly vote your.
Oh, I'm gonna get crushed, but go ahead. I just wanna, like, I just, everyone was singing in such a sound.
We could do roll call, if you'd like, that way it'll be noted.
No, just the votes, fine, I just wanted to let you know that I was using.
But this, this vote is just to get it on the warrant.
Yes, for both towns. We have a deadline to meet for their town meetings. Uh, any other discussion?
I just wanna put it on the record that I'm in favor of it.
Way to go.
Just letting you know.
Listen, didn't we already?
Just wanted to put that out there.
How do we get, how do we get around the fact that we've already missed the date to put this on the warrant?
There's a placeholder there.
For the school.
There is?
Yep.
Okay. Because we discussed that at our last meeting.
All right, so roll call vote, John?
Aye.
Steve?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Erin, yes. Bill?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
And Georgia?
Yes.
Thank you. And discussion of subcommittees?
I actually just asked for that to be on there, because I know, um, you know, the last four years that I've been on this committee, we've had a number of subcommittees, and it's, do you wanna be on a subcommittee? Sure, what committee you wanna be on? So, I, I, I'm feeling as though, you know, after the last few conversations, you know, of having media, and talking about legislative updates, and, you know, regional agreement, and, um, policy. I think, at, at this point, I would like to see, you know, subcommittees that are doing something. So either we, we scratch it and wait till April, and get new subcommittees with a goal, and, and a, and a way to reach that goal, um, instead of saying we're on a subcommittee, or, or having these subcommittees, and, and not moving forward with some action. So, I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, I, I think it's important to have subcommittees, but subcommittees with a, an action-oriented subcommittee, and not just.
There are definitely some that are very busy, and, um, regional agreement in particular. Uh, budget is just coming around.
Right, but we do have, we do have policy. We had, we have facilities, we have, we have policy, we have facilities. We do talk about policy often, but I don't think we've, you know, moved forward with it, so.
Have we actually assigned people to all of those committees, though?
Who's on the policy and the facilities committee?
Yeah, because I don't remember that.
But truly, in, in the next couple of months, the contract negotiations in the budget are really gonna, I think, carry us through April. So, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, but I think right now, we're kinda busy.
That's why I just wanted to bring it up, because I think it's, I think it's important. I mean, there's a lot of things that are, that are happening, and, you know, I just think it's important that if, if we're going to say we're on a committee, or we're going to say, you know, we're creating subcommittees, then the subcommittees have to have an action, or, or some type of progress moving forward. Um, so, you know, if we scratch it, that's great, I just, it, something to think about in April.
Scratch the subcommittee for negotiations, because we're already in the middle of it.
No, I'm just saying, we had, we had strategic plan at one point, we had, we had facilities at one point, we had policy at one point.
But I don't think we've ever updated those since we got new members on the, I mean, I don't think the new folks who are here have ever been assigned a committee, other than if they volunteered as.
Facilities, right?
Yeah, I'm on facilities.
Yeah, so that's why I'm thinking, like, it's just, it's just kind of like this.
Give us a report.
No one's, I, they're all, they all seem to be working fine at this point.
I just, I just, I just thought it was important to put.
I agree with you, I don't think we've done.
But, yeah, you, you're absolutely right with me.
Well, let's give credit to the ones that have, which is, regional agreement.
Right.
Negotiations, we're very busy.
Sick bank, we meet.
Sick bank is whenever called.
Yeah.
Read, uh, and budget, I mean, that's all of us, so.
That's all of us, right.
There's not a budget subcommittee?
No.
No.
There used to be.
We tried, we tried.
The, the, the design is there, but it's not, we shouldn't call it a budget subcommittee.
Right.
So was there one in particular that you wanted to?
No, I just, I just, you know, I, I, you know, I remember four years ago saying, do we have a strategic plan update? No, no update. Facility update? No, no update. So I just think it's important, looking forward, that if, if we're gonna have a subcommittee, that it needs to be action-oriented, and, you know, or we don't, that's all.
Yeah, my only comment is, is if you could, after tonight, email to the committee what the listings are, because I don't know what the hell they are.
Well, I think they've actually, they've changed, since strategic plan is no longer.
It's a great, it's a great thing, so just email us what you have, with the names, so we can then look at it. And then, um, and then we can either, because I think we should scrap it, and start in April when, when we go through an election. And, um, then, um, you know, I mean, the policy one has been lingering for probably twenty-five years. And it doesn't seem to get done.
Right.
I've suggested, probably three times, give it to MASC at the state level to revamp and put it online for us, to get it in line, and there's probably two or three unique ones that we have to kinda think about. That makes it this big, you know what I mean? So, we can do that in April, you know what I mean? Um, so, but I, I'd like to see what we have on record right now, is who's doing, or who's supposed to be doing what.
Right.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to say.
All right, and moving on, report of the superintendent, legislative update.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vannaco, and I know that, uh, Mr. Chaplin has also some, some information here. The bottom line is that our, our former interim, Dr. Davis, is the interim director of the Mass Association of Regional School Districts this year. And every year, first week of, so of March, there is a legislative breakfast where, um, all of the superintendents, business managers from the regional districts get together and hear from our legislators, um, committee chairs, um, and Department of Ed officials as to what is transpiring on the budget process. And so that meeting takes place the first week of March, and, um, we will be in attendance, um, to see, and the, right after that is the adoption hearing, and we will have that full report, um, as to what is going on. Obviously, the only thing that gets reported is, is, uh, the infatuation with lifting the charter cap and the politics around that. There's also, um, needs to be delineated, uh, common core versus the Massachusetts frameworks, um, as well as MCAS versus Park, versus MCAS two-point-oh, versus no testing at all. So, uh, there's a lot going on at the state level, and after that meeting, I will be reporting on the tenth, back to the committee. Um, it, it always promises to be interesting, as, as Jerry knows.
Okay, and then report of the assistant superintendent.
Hold on, hold on, we're gonna, we're gonna continue with legislative, I think. Um, so, uh, with that, I'm just gonna add that, um, in, end of January, we took a vote, unanimous vote, to, um, uh, adamantly oppose the addition of subject-to-appropriation to the regional, um, transportation, that the governor was trying to oppose. We took a vote on that, uh, we subsequently then sent letters, uh, I tweeted out to Fatman and Kiros, uh, and we got into a dialogue, uh, so that they've heard that. I think this committee needs to take a vote, uh, tonight on, uh, a resolution, um, for calling for full funding of the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendation. Uh, there's probably ten communities right now that have, that, school committees that, that have done it. Right now, there's, uh, there's that, uh, the, uh, Chapter Seventy funding resolution that's going through the legislation, uh, and the Act strengthening public education and the Commonwealth. Both pointing to what we've already talked about ad nauseam tonight, uh, the inequity in terms of the funding formula around special ed and health insurance, as well as many other areas. Um, so, I'd like to make a motion that this committee, um, takes a vote tonight to, um, calls on the Massachusetts legislator and the governor of Massachusetts to fully fund and adopt the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission in the immediate future. So I'm gonna make that in the form of a motion, if someone wants to second it.
I'll second that.
Hey, motion made by Bill, second by Steve. Any discussion?
Can we send that off to them? How, how would they know that we took this vote?
I mean, I think the next step after we vote, we let the other regional, uh, the, uh, we all, we all get the same email that I get, the suburban coalition, we let them know that we're a part of that. Um, and, uh, then we, uh, email and write letters to our legislators, saying this is what the school committee has done, and, um, uh, and we don't, uh, ease up for the next, um, ninety days. Um, and another, a great thing would be if we had good representation at the Day on the Hill, uh, at the, in the end of April. Uh, it's always been me, or, um, Dr. Haw, he went last year. Um, that's when you can go and have a face-to-face conversation. Last year, Senator Fatman made the mistake of not being there. Um, and, uh, I don't, I, I don't think he's gonna make that mistake this year. But you get to see, uh, a lot of the, uh, uh, educational committees that are in there, that are, that are for these things. Uh, I mean, like Dr., um, Dr., like Mr. Himmlenberger said, Superintendent Himmlenberger said, um, um, you know, they, they took the time for a year to look at that and come out and do these, these wonderful, uh, open house meetings and get feedback, and did nothing about it. And, and everyone knows that the formula is wrong. I mean, the formula was created to create equity. All it's done is create inequity. The wealthier towns with higher property taxes use Chapter Seventy as fluff money. We use it in desperation. Um, so, that needs to change, and, and we can't hear that. We hear a lot about charters, we hear a lot about, um, um, you know, uh, you know, you know, additional funding for vogue schools, which they need as well. Um, but, you know, we gotta be clear, okay? You had a great letter to, uh, to Representative Kiros about the additional, uh, for, uh, capital for the vocational schools. Uh, and he had a great response, and we agree with it. Would they need capital improvement? However, eighty-five million dollars, or whatever it was, is going to how many schools? Uh, how many schools is it?
I don't know, probably twenty-five, twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six schools. Uh, and, you know, the other, how many? How many's left now? Three hundred something? You know, we, we're scraping by, and again, look, I am for BBT, I am for Norfolk Aggie as a choice. Uh, but we can't keep getting by with breadcrumbs. My daughter goes to BBT, I'll say that publicly, okay? It's a wonderful school, it's great, uh, and they deserve every penny that they get. However, we can't keep being second fiddle, and we're doing a lot of things. Just like you said, John, we're doing a lot of things to make it more attractive and the choice harder.
You know what, Bill? You know what the problem is? The problem is, they're dealing with this Chapter Seventy money, that we sit there and ask for, and they throw us crumbs. It's like buying a scratch chicken and winning your money back.
Right.
That's really what it is. It's like, if you're not gonna give us benefit back, then don't take our money. Okay? To fix the T and subsidize the cities. All right? Because I, you're, you're right. I, I look at this, and I, and I look at a budget, and I look at an increase that we need desperately. And, you know, I, I'm, listen, I'm not, I, I don't wanna pay property taxes, I don't wanna pay any taxes. If I, if I could, if I could get away with it, I wouldn't pay a dime in any taxes. But I have to, because I have to pay for public safety, and that's the realist. But to take the money, and then to make the promise, and then not to fulfill the promise, and have us sitting here, holding a budget that, you know, we have pipe dreams, and pipe dreams aren't putting a pool in the gymnasium, pipe dreams are having Chromebooks that are on push carts so that students can share them. I think that's a pretty meager expectation. And, you know, I, I just look at these people and, you know, sit up on the hill, and they're more worried about, you know, this T that they've driven into the, the MBTA system that they've driven into the ground, now they're gonna try to use green Band-Aids to fix it. Well, those green Band-Aids came out of my wallet, and I don't use the T. And, you know, but I, I see the kids going to the BMR, and I see the kids going to Hartnett, and I'm more concerned about them, so, don't tell me you're doing me any favors by giving me my own money back. I'm just, I'm just fed up with it, you know, in terms of the, the way everything works up there and what gets publicized and what doesn't. And I agree, and I, you know, if these motions help, I'm all for it.
I think it's just being unified. I think, well, this, all this is, is being unified. Is it gonna create, are they gonna fully fund, uh, the, the Foundation Budget Review stuff? They can't, okay? But they gotta do better than what they're doing.
It's, it's not only that, but-
They gotta be a plan.
I mean, what, what, some people might not realize is, because we're in a regionalization agreement, we have certain requirements for transportation of our students that regular schools don't have.
Right.
Those are increasing costs and expenses. It's like, you know what? If, if you're not gonna give us the money, then get out of the system, get out of our way.
Change the law.
Get out of our way so we can deal with what little money we have to make it more effective and efficient for the use in educating our kids, you know? But they don't. You know, they, they wanna create all these, cause it sounds like a good idea and it's, it's popular and, you know, let's see where our representatives vote on those issues.
Right. And that, that's the important piece. We have to hold, they work for us. We have to, we have to hold them accountable. And, you know, Senator Fatman was, you know, he was offended last year when I called him out that he wasn't there that day, uh, and I had phone conversations with him and whatnot. And he's been better, he's been responsive, you know, in terms of, cause it's an important issue in all of his towns. Uh, and I think he's hearing, and it's only an important issue in all of his towns because everyone's being unified. So, this motion is just about being unified with other school committees, but it, it can't stop here. We have to write letters, we have to encourage other people to write letters and hold them accountable. You know, I'd like to see them here at some point, you know, or, or even, I, I'll go to them, that's fine. But the big, one big day is that day on the Hill a- a- at the end of April. And, and I'm certainly gonna be there. Um, so, you know, that, that's all this motion's for, so I'll just, I'll stop there.
Okay, so the motion was, uh, made by Bill and seconded by Steve. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous, thank you, Bill. And moving on to the report of the assistant superintendent, curriculum update.
Yeah, just one, uh, quick thing, our next professional day is Friday, March eleventh. Uh, that will be, um, mainly focused on the curriculum mapping project, which we are slated to complete by May. Um, so just to let everybody know what we're gonna be doing for, we do have a couple of other things going on, but most of our teachers will be doing their literacy training or working on the curriculum maps and aligning our curriculum throughout the district, so. That's it on that one.
Is that a Friday?
That is a Friday, yes.
What?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And, and that is the last professional day of the year.
And our last public forum. Anyone has questions or comments? Now is your time. We have an audience tonight.
Yeah, it's awesome.
No one else to speak, that's fine. School committee forum. We'll start with Georgia. Any comments or?
Just wanted to say thank you to the fourth graders that came today. It was a great presentation, as always. Um, and in the last meeting, I wasn't here, but I was able to watch it. And, um, I just think, when the kids gave their presentation, they were saying how they came about, you know, what they used. And I thought it was great that they said that they used, like, the iPads, you know, from the cot and stuff like that, and they went to, um, what was it? Tech, you know, once, once a week or whatever. So, it, it shows the parents out there that these kids need this stuff in order to do what they're doing. So, I just wanna say thanks, that was also a great presentation. Yep.
Thank you. Jane?
Uh, I would like to, um, echo the, I have really appreciated the presentation we saw today, and I enjoyed reading the book. Um, I would be a pink crayon, cre- clearly. Um, and I appreciate the people that came in to the audience today, and I, I hope to return that by going to the town meetings and the FinCom meetings in the town and really starting that dialogue that's been created over the last couple of years and we'll keep that going. Um, also wanted to congratulate the schools that have been doing a lot of fundraising lately. I, the volleyball, I think, was a record fourteen thousand dollars raised, the soup fundraiser, um, the roast, unfortunately, we have a meeting during the time that that roast is going on. But there's a lot of fundraising efforts, which not only raise funds for the students and their programs and the schools, but really provide community activity and entertainment and, you know, we really don't have a lot of that in these two communities. And so when there's opportunity to listen to the band or opportunity to watch some volleyball or, or come have a dinner or come see, you know, faculty, and I think it's all men getting roasted and, and they left, and I was gonna ask why, it's only men, but, um-
Volunteer.
The women didn't sign up.
Volunteer.
Is that right, what it was not? Anyway, um, yeah, no, I wouldn't wanna be roasted.
I can volunteer you and I can start if you want.
No, no, we have a meeting that night, we have a meeting.
We have a meeting.
But anyway, I think the fundraising efforts are, are wonderful and, and I hope that we continue to support them. Congratulations to those groups there.
Thank you, Jane. Bill?
Uh, I'm just gonna echo what Jane said. I thought the, uh, presentation again tonight was great. I love the book, you know, it was the first time I read it. Um, I'm glad that the committee, Wendy had the idea of getting that book, uh, the, the sequel to it, to, to give to them, it was a great idea. Um, and, uh, I'd love to see more of that as we move forward. That's it.
Wendy?
Um, I also wanna thank the, um, the students and the teachers who came out tonight. I also wanna thank the representatives from both towns that are here at this meeting right now, um, because it's really important to, um, know what's going on, just as I would wanna be at that, at your meetings as well and know what's going on. Um, it is posted and we do have these meetings, you know, set almost a year in advance. So, if there are any questions, you know, feel free to contact us. But I do wanna take a minute and thank you for coming out and listening.
Tara?
Um, this week, um, Mr. Himmelberger did a supper with the super here at the middle school, and I attended as a parent. Um, and some of the concerns from the other parents were that they want to see more information on the high school when their kids are younger. So it would be nice for us to develop some kind of a program to get fifth, you know, starting even as early as fifth, but at, at least the sixth and seventh graders, um, access and information on the bill, on the school sooner.
Good feedback. Thank you. Steve?
Excellent, one of the things, um, getting my Griffin Riley hat, the home show is this Saturday, and, um, I think that name is kinda misleading. The home, uh, when I think of home show, I think of, uh, hot tubs and recital windows and things like that.
Books.
And that's, that's not what this home show is. It is a show that is held at home, meaning BMR. And there, there are twenty-eight bands and, uh, winter guard, um, troops coming. So that's really what it is, it's really the, the, the winter percussion and winter guard show held at home. Again, it's not the home show. But, uh, that's four o'clock to, um, nine fifteen on Saturday.
But is it at BMR?
Yes, it's, it's at, and-
I know our fall, our fall show was, home show was-
That was, uh, Medway, I think it was?
That's for the marching band, because of the field.
Yeah. But again, so if, you know, I, I'd like to see some of the younger kids there. They wanna see the great things that we do.
Absolutely.
And actually, speaking of great things that we do, this crayon presentation was tremendous, that type of thing. Um, I know Jesse's been working real hard filming everything he possibly can and getting out there, and that, that's great. I think that's what we need to do, we need to publicize what we do and what we do well. And, uh, we're, we're doing a lot of that. Um, I'd like to thank the administrators for all their work, for, they're not here yet now, but all the work for putting together their budget and all the work that they're going to do in the next two months. I know that's, this is when it really gets tough. Um, I was on FinCom, I know a lot of us were here at one point, and I've been saying this since way back when. I think you guys would all agree with me, we have a revenue problem. We don't really have a spending problem. We have a revenue problem, that's when we really need to work on the revenue side of things, rather than just, you know, killing each other and fighting over the scraps like we've been talking about. Revenue is our issue, I don't think really spending is. Um, and I'd like to see, you know, a lot of people out at all the, uh, upcoming meetings, FinCom and, um, Board of Selectmen. The Millville Town Meeting is May ninth, and the Blackstone Town Meeting is May thirty-first. So again, Millville, May ninth, Blackstone, May thirty-first. But don't show up for the first time that day, like John said, you know, what's this budget all about? I haven't seen this before. That's two months from now. So you have two months to learn and we have plenty of opportunities, so. You know, let's stay out there and learn about the budget, so. That's it for now.
Okay.
Steve, is, is there any, cause the, the program's going on this weekend, is there any cost to get in there?
Yeah, I, I believe it's ten dollars, because there's some very high fees with, um, some of the bands and the, um, the judges.
Is that ten dollars also include for students that may, may wanna attend?
Um, I think the students are like half, I think it's five. I think it's ten and five.
And is that gonna be indoors or outdoors?
That, that's all in the gym.
Okay.
It's all in the gym. And it gets extremely crowded because, like I said, there are twenty-eight, um, groups coming, so they're coming from all in this area, so their parents are coming, parking will be tight. But, uh, you, if you come, you'll see how great it is, so.
Alright. Um, you know, the fir- first thing I wanna say is I apologize to the fourth grade cause I was just running late. Um, I saw them out there, so I got to say thank you very much for the, the book and, and get, get to turn in my book and whatnot, and I'm gonna read their creations. It is, that's, you know, one of the better things that I really, I, they got through it a lot faster, so I, I apologize for that. I'm gonna echo what, uh, Steve said, it's so important, anybody watching this or listening to it, talk about it at, when you pick up your coffee at, you know, your local variety store, whatnot, talk about the budget. Talk, negative or positive, it doesn't matter, start communication. This isn't about yelling or screaming or name-calling or saying you're gonna punch somebody in the face. This is about, this is about having debate, having, uh, drawing a consensus with respect to how much money we're gonna spend on our educational system in our two communities, and you need to discuss it. Because everybody sitting at these desks and tables give up time with their family, away from their job, and they do it in, for the purposes of, whether it's here in a school committee and the finance committee or the two towns, the Board of Selectmen. I mean, contrary, they're not getting independently wealthy from this, okay? Really not. And it just gets frustrating after a while when you do take away that kinda time to go to town meeting and have that person say, "Oh, well, why are we hearing about this for the first time?" It's like, you know, it's like, really? I mean, we had multiple public hearings, we've been doing this for months. It's posted on, and it should be posted on the, the virtual town meeting, uh, town halls. Information is my phone number, my email, it's all listed on the, both the website for the town of Blackstone as a member of the finance committee and the school committee. So I'm accessible. If you have any questions you wanna ask or any issues you want me to raise or questions you want me to raise in the context of this, I understand everyone's busy. I understand there's jobs and family and things that you have to do. Um, but, you know, you gotta get involved because education is like the cornerstone of our communities. It, it really is, and, you know, the, because the, once you go to the town meeting, you'll notice that the people that this school system serves are not there. And they can't be there cause they don't have a voice. Their voice is through you as parents, grandparents, relatives, or just people in a community that say, "You know what? I wanna live in a community, not a town, I wanna live in a community where people and ha- hold education at a high level. Education and, and safety services and the like, I wanna live there." And, and, you know, we do it, the music program is probably the biggest example of how we have the capacity to do it. So where there's no excuses, we have the capacity to do it. And we need to transfer that energy, enthusiasm from that program